All right, we're ready to get started. We will call to order this county commission meeting. And we usually start these meetings with a prayer reading or thought. We have Chaplain Linda Walton here who will do that for us today. And following that, we'll do the pledge of allegiance. Do we have a volunteer for the pledge of allegiance? Anybody? Paul, thank you. All right.
There is a note from Benjamin Franklin that I wanted to read to you. "God grant that not only the love of liberty, but a thorough knowledge of the rights of man may pervade all the nations of the earth so that a philosopher may set his foot anywhere on its surface and say, 'This is my country.'" Good one. Let's pray together. Our dear Father, we are so grateful to have the right to do this. We are grateful for all of the documents and the people involved that give us the safety and the information that we need to make this area a better place. And Father, we pray that your Spirit will be with everyone in this room and others that may be helping in other ways, and particularly with our Sheriff's Department and others that are always putting their lives on the line for us. Thank you so much for this time together, and again, we pray for wisdom. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Linda. We always appreciate your prayers.
You're invited to rise with me and recite our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we head into our work session, we're going to build our consent agenda so that if people can leave afterwards if their items don't get held. On items from the regular agenda, on items one through 10, do we have any that need to be held?
I've got all my questions answered.
I have none.
Same. All right, 11 through 20.
Continue 19 for two weeks.
Okay, continue 19 for two weeks. And then I would like to hold item number 20. Okay, 21 through 30.
I have none.
Okay, 31 through 40. We'll hold 37.
Okay. Good on the others.
Okay. And then 41 through 50.
I've gone through all those. I have no questions or comments.
Okay, we're going to hold item, we're going to hold item 50 as stated. And we'll strike items 51, 52, and 53. All right, Maureen, you want to repeat that back to us?
Okay, I have us. Seven. Holding 50 as stated, striking 51, 52, and 53.
Yep, that's what I forgot to fill. Thank you. Okay, next we'll move into our work session, which is a semi-annual report from the Utah State University Extension Service.
Thank you.
Here's Jake's passing those out, the handouts. I will get started. Tom Beddys, I'm county resident Santaquin and county director for USU Extension, and we are going to try to keep this to 15 minutes so everybody can get out of here on time.
That's great.
Okay, so just really quick, USU does a lot of work in Utah County, and USU does a lot of needs assessment and then assesses the effectiveness of what we're doing in these for our latest surveying is the, what the people that were polled said about the information and services provided by USU in Utah County. So, USU is funded by federal, state, and county funds, and the salaries alone that USU puts into the employees here that are helping in the county, 440,000 is conservative on the estimate on that. And then as far as services rendered within Utah County, 587,000. And then grants, almost 800,000 in grants, and then extension volunteers, 300,000. Oh, I don't have my glasses on. That's 384,000 it looks like.
Yes.
So, my prescription changed recently, so. All right, so impacts, 2,199,000, you know, so I'm hoping that the services rendered are worth it to the county. Our 2023 budget, we're requesting 380,000, and that is mainly due to this inflation, COLA increases, and the lease on our building. It's gone up 2,000 a year since we've been there, and we've been able to cover that, but over the last five years, you know, that's a $10,000 increase. So, here's our fixed costs or our budget, if FNO on it. And payroll, we were able to add a coordinator, 4-H coordinator, that does a lot of youth programming. And so I'm using $22,000 that I was able to kind of massage other areas of our budget. And she's able, it's Coriann Topham or Coriann Manglison Topham, and she's able to reach a lot of youth that we weren't before, and I felt like that was a good use of funds, but this is a breakdown of our budget. So, what we're going to be doing, this is our individual budgets for each program area, and for what we're doing, you know, it's not a lot of money. Holman Community basically has one or two people working with that. Hortonag have three or four, hence more, more people divide up the money. And then 4-H and STEM where most, there's the bulk of our programming has the most money. So, I'm going to turn the time over to cover some brief impacts from others, and we'll go from there. One more here, at any rate. So, okay, we'll turn it over.
Hello, my name is Cindy Jenkins with Utah State University Extension, and I work in the Holman Community area. My counterpart, who is not here today, Gabby Mercer, is not represented, but I'll just be doing a quick overview of a few new things that we've been doing. And I wanted to make sure that you all are aware of the current Boulder Way Forward meeting that is coming up on August 6th from 12:30 to 2:00 PM. Of course, you are all invited. If you are able to be there, we'd love to have you. And we will be working in partnership with the Utah Women in Leadership Project on the Boulder Way Forward campaign and the She Can, I Can initiative that we've also created within Utah County. Any questions there? Okay. And then in addition to that, just a highlight from something else that we've been doing, of course, we have many different projects going on, but this is a quick highlight that we did receive some grant funding to do this diabetes cook-along, and it has been able to reach quite a number of people, which I think is very impressive. And type 2 diabetes, something that many people struggle with within the county and statewide, and so we've been able to reach a good number of individuals within the county and statewide. And we continue to work on this, and we're planning on additional classes in 2024. Any questions there? All right, thank you for your time.
Okay, um, let's see. So, I'm Jake Hadfield. I work with agriculture specifically within the Extension Office. And just to kind of give you a little bit of what's happened the last six months, I reported six months ago, but we actually just held our fall farm field days. For those of you who don't know, we hold farm field days twice a year. We do it in the fall and spring. Spring's more for the second graders, the second grade elementary kids that are in the south end of our county, and fall's more for the kids that are on the north end of our county. And so, we ended up having 2,371 second grade students come through this last go-around. That actually includes 100 and about five homeschoolers. We kind of went into homeschooling a little bit more to bring those kids in. We had 108 FFA students who volunteered to come out and teach these kids, as well as we had multiple visitors, chaperones, master gardener volunteers, et cetera. The one thing I did wanted to point out is with farm field days, this is very much run by the volunteers. I mean, we help with logistics and whatnot, but without the volunteers, this doesn't happen. We had a total volunteer hours of over 1,000 hours, and that's estimated to be about a total value of about $31,000. So, it's a pretty cool program, and it's really cool to see how our volunteers support farm field days. Now, just some things that are coming up on our agriculture side. We took a needs assessment to determine what kind of events are needed, and as we're getting into the fall and winter, when our producers are more available to come to education opportunities, we have a pesticide applicator training, which gives CEU credits for pesticide applicators on October 12th. We have a sheep-specific education night, October 24th, and then a beef education night on November 7th. And so those are just some things that are coming down the pipeline. I'll turn it over to Heather next.
I'm Heather Thompson. I am one of the coordinators, and one of my main programs is the horse program. And this year, we have seen a huge increase. We've seen 87% in the last two years with leaders and youth. We're now the largest program in the state of Utah, and we had 30 youth, two weeks ago, compete at Heber as part of the state horse show, and they all did super great. And then we had a few youth in the English and the two-hand. Our biggest program that's growing right now is the Horse Science Club. This runs during the winter when the kids can't ride. We have monthly meetings where they learn everything from the horse colors to the anatomy of the foot. And then we got to go on field trips, and we have plans for that again this year. We got to tour South Valley equine, which was a very neat experience, and it helped the kids learn where they could apply this and, and hopefully find a career in the equine industry for these horse-loving kids. And then another super fun thing we have is cowboy camp a part of it for the kids that have no experience with horses, have no opportunity to ride a horse. We get to go for a weekend, they get to ride horses, they get to experience everything, and they have a lot of fun with it.
Great.
That's it for me. Do you want me to change? Okay, this is a statewide report that they just did, and in the areas of belonging, youth have grown by 96%. Life skills, 94%. And then 80% in they feel like 4-H helps them avoid potentially risky and illegal behaviors, and then 89% in their healthy relationships. So, I think those numbers speak for themselves, the impact that it has on the youth.
Absolutely.
Incredible program.
Yeah, thanks, Heather.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we have a lot more going on, and I wanted to keep this brief, and we try to bring different sections of what we do every time we present, but that's what we have. I just wanted to open up to you, any questions to you.
I don't know how you can make it better.
Thank you.
No, you guys do a great job of tracking things and keeping your numbers, and your numbers continue to improve, and you do the surveys, and I think it's a good, a great program. Obviously, I'm biased towards 4-H because my boys are both 4-H, 4-Hers, but.
Appreciate it. I've inundated you with horticulture information on your, for publications. I wanted to point out, those are available statewide, but much of that work in those publications is from campus specialists working in Utah County as far as pest monitoring and things of that nature. And that's just an example of something USU is doing in Utah County. It does benefit the entire state, but anything having to do especially with the fruit is people coming from Logan down here to do that work and then put it together. So, thank you for your time, and if there's no other questions, we'll let you move on. Thank you.
Thank you for a great program.
Thank you, Tom.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Tom. That's great. All right, the next one we have is the Soldier Summit Special Service District contract. So, I did have a, I had a couple of questions on, on that one. I don't know who's, is there anyone from the special, from the Soldier Summit Special Service District here? You want to come up so I can?
Brady might, is Brady here? He might be able to answer some things, too. He's not? Okay.
But I thought Monica was going to be here to present this.
Monica's right there.
And so, Peter.
Yeah.
So. Who do you want to hear from?
As I say, whoever wants to answer the question, I mean, I have a question.
About the project.
Okay.
Yeah, so my questions are more about the project description. And one is just, what is different in this project than what was originally approved?
We really streamlined it down. Originally, what approved was a well and a much more robust line of water lines that go across the highway. They had gone across the highway in two separate places, which was quite a bit more expensive. Instead of going in two, we've narrowed it down so that we just could afford it, really, with one line across the highway that feeds this, the town district area.
Was it, were you drilling a well before and doing two sets of lines?
We were drilling a well and doing two sets of lines.
Okay, and so, and now, are you still drilling the well?
We're not drilling the well right now, no.
So.
We're doing the lines. That's probably the most expensive thing we have in the district is repair and maintenance on those lines. They are just terrible.
Were they existing lines?
They are. Yeah.
Okay, will this increase capacity at all?
Yes, we'll be able to put hydrants on the other side of the highway so that we can protect the store and properties and actually our whole district.
Oh, so it's fire, like fire hydrants, not capacity for building new homes?
It's, it's both. With one comes the other. So, right now, no one can build over there, no one can do anything over there. There's not even a fire hydrant over there. We don't have enough pressure to run even one. With this, we'll have strategically placed fire hydrants on that side of the highway to be able to protect those things, would allow the gas station, if they want to spruce up their bathroom, bathrooms and things like that, they can do that. They don't have the water to do that now. They can't even get a permit to get another bathroom. So.
Will this increase the ability to build homes?
I don't know that it will increase the ability to build homes. I think it will make some properties usable. Looking at the way that the, the other side of the highway is zoned, you would have to have, I believe, like 150-acre lots, and those lots are like a quarter acre at the biggest, most of them. So, those people, I would imagine, are going to want to hook into the water. So those people I would imagine are going to want to hook into the water and put a spigot maybe for a camping area or things like that, which would generate some, some funding for us as well. But also the main thing is really protection and the existing people across the highway that have hookups having to maintain those things. It's just extremely expensive.
Okay, will there be additional user fees that are collected because of this line?
We currently automatically know, but that will open it up that yes, we will be able to do some user fees. So as people want, once the lines are in, we'll be able to hook up meters. We can't even meter over there right now. So they're using water and paying a flat fee each month. Where in our district, we have kind of a robust tiered system. So it'll actually promote conservancy over there as well as give us the ability to bring in more income and provide water to users that don't have that ability right now.
Hey, how many users?
There's eleven users right now. There could be an additional thirty to forty users.
We don't have that right now. Okay. So the reason I'm asking these questions is when we put out this RFP for this, we had fifty million. We had fifty million to give out. We had a hundred and twenty million in requests and we gave out fifty million. And every district or municipality that asked for replacement of existing lines, we said no. We said those are maintenance fees. You should cover that out of your user fees. We should cover that up maintenance. And we prioritized that money. Like I said, we had a hundred and twenty million in requests. We prioritized that money for fifty million dollars for drilling of wells, increased capacity or reuse facilities. And since this doesn't qualify under any of those three at this point, I'm going to vote no just for consistency's purposes because we told Pleasant Grove, no, we do that we wouldn't replace existing lines. We told Linden, no, we wouldn't replace existing lines. And we told Alpine, no, that we wouldn't replace existing lines. And I don't think it's fair to them that you won the RFP and you got funding and then you changed the project to things that they had asked and that we had said no. So I totally see the need for it, but for consistency stake sake, considering we had seventy million of projects that weren't funded and fifty million that were, my vote is going to be for no on this change because of that, but that's.
Is this a change or the, the same project?
It's dumbing it down. It's four point seven million dollars to do the well as well. The county had it set up with low interest or no interest funding. When they handed this service district over to us, things got stalled out. Those monies have dried up. We desperately need to be able to move forward. I guess this is the side of the highway that's been kind of ousted for years. If you do any research on the development, everything on the, on the side with the summer homes and all of that is was taken over by the county and turned into a special service district. And then at this point, that's where it was put. That's where it was. We're getting close to where the state requires the other well to be installed. But with the timeline running out, we decided to break this into separate projects so that we could at least get something done. The well was a higher cost and gave us less advantage. In other words, we're, we're running fine with the well. If we had to change the pump, that's not that, it's not that expensive. We can handle those types of things. But we're basically handed this water system. It's a four inch main that goes under the railroad and Highway six. And it's just been band-aided for the last twenty years. So it was pretty much before us.
Just a two inch.
Two inch main. So I mean, this, this all started before us and we're just trying to take.
Yeah, this was started two years, two and a half years ago, I think. And I thought we had already approved the ARPA funds for it.
We had, but that's what the point is. They're changing, because they're changing the project, they're changing.
Yes.
And, and I'm saying that if had they submitted this project, it would not have, it would not have made the cut. So I don't feel comfortable funding it because had they submitted this, it would not have made the cut, right? And what's the total on the amount again?
It's two million.
Oh, yeah, two million dollars for eleven seasonal water users. I just don't think that's the highest investment.
Railroad and a gas station as well, which does support Highway six and Highway fifty.
And when this first came up, wasn't it, we were getting to a threshold when we had to put a second well in, Richard? Do you remember, were we like thirteen residents away from being forced by the state to do this?
Yeah, Richard Nelson, Polycourts Director, yeah, the, the well, the well purpose is that the, I believe it's the vision of drinking water. Will let us go up to, it's either ninety six or ninety eight connections on a single well. Once you get beyond that, it requires a second well to, to have the, the community system be able to continue on and add. There's about a hundred and fifty or a hundred and sixty overall potential connections on the, the Soldier Summit system. So for those other lots that haven't been built on yet, to be able to do anything with, the second well has to go in for that to happen. The, when the, the original project was put together, the two million dollars a couple of years ago, two or three years ago, it did include both the well and the, the piping that they're talking about in the old town site because of the, the undersized nature of it. It's, it's part of what the, that's the main thing that the county got back in the early eighties when the town of Soldier Summit disincorporated. And the two counties wound up with the, the water system and that's when the, the Special Service District was created. As the summer home development came on in the early two thousands, yeah, somewhere in that timeframe. That's when all that side of the, the project was built with that development. So it's a relatively new system on the, I'll say the south side of the highway. But it's, you know, still feeding water into this very old system that's on the north side. So that gives you a little bit of background on it.
But how close are we to where we're going to be forced by the state to have a second well?
It's, it's close. We're, we're within just a few, a few connections.
That was a discussion two and a half years ago and, and, and I was hoping that this would have been resolved a year and a half ago.
We're somewhere around ninety connections total, I believe. I, I haven't looked at the numbers recently, but.
And if we weren't, if we weren't, if we hadn't moved the district over to, you know, from us to them, would we be, what would we be doing as a county, if you will? Would we be utilizing ARPA funding to be doing some of these projects?
I'll try to give you a, a really good non-answer here. As the county, we would not be doing anything. As the Special Service District that was being run by county employees, we would be scrambling trying to get it done.
Okay. You're knowing and understanding that.
It wasn't, it wasn't directly the county that was doing it. We were just the operators for the Special Service District. That makes sense?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. But the cost would be back to the Special Service District?
Yes, it would.
Yeah, it wouldn't be on the county cost. It would be on the Special Service District. Okay.
I see the wisdom in when it was originally approved for this. And so I would, I understand where you're coming from, but I would, I'm, I'm leaning towards, we're here, we're, we're moving forward. We got the Special Service District adjusted. We did a lot of work to get the right people in place to do some of these. So I'm in favor of, of it.
Yeah, because like I said, this has been almost three years going. And a lot of things have changed since we first talked about this when Brady was pushing this, presenting it at the Soldier Summit District when I was chairing it. And the, the need is, is definitely there and the cost is high principally because of what it has to do. Going on the tracks, under the road, that's enormous cost by itself. And it doesn't help that inflation has pushed it up the dollar bill even more. And so that's part of the cost. And so every time I hear about this, I'm feeling smaller and smaller. I wish we had gotten this done a year and a half ago, but we couldn't get contractors to do the design work. That was part of the problem. And so it forced us to delay this on and on and on. Now we're three years in. Yeah, I'm in favor of continuing forward because this was the original intent was to take care of that community to make sure they had the water available to them and repair the pipes that are there. I'm sorry, we can't do a second well, but we're going to have to be ready to do that, it sounds like, pretty soon. I don't know when soon is, but.
I did have a question for Peter and Monica. Does this, does these changes have any effect on on funding obligations and things like that, if my question makes sense?
Yeah, Peter Brown Auditor's Office, the allowability, the federal allowability, the allowability does not change with the, the kind of the change in the project. It was just a matter of county priority.
That's what, okay, that helps me. That was at the time when the commissioners approve these projects. Okay.
And this, and this, and, and, and we had approved this prior to the RFP to the, to the other entities that had water funding. And then this project scope changed when we submitted that change. I think it was on the eighth of September, I sent it over to be approved for the scope change. And risk in, and I guess two of you responded on the fifteenth that you were, you approved it. So we just moved forward. That's, that's why we're here. So.
Okay.
Questions?
Looking down the road, how much would it cost to put in a second well?
Based on the numbers they gave us. David said weeks, based on the numbers they gave us, it would be about two and a half million.
Just for the well?
Hmm.
Jeez.
And so.
I wish you were here eighteen months ago.
Yeah, just with the way the water works and everything, we can get this project up and running and do everything the federal government wants us to do and be in the ground, no problem.
Comply with them anyway.
And then we can, we can work on that well, but just with the economy changing just that little bit with a lot of the monies that low interest and no interest stuff that we would be using. Just change the scope a little.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve item twenty.
I can second.
All right, it's been moved in second in for item number twenty. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Nay? All right, that passes two one. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Richard, any more delays in this project?
It's, it's not up to him anymore. It's not us.
I know. I, I, I get it, but we, we were, I thought we had proved this like three or four times before in the last eighteen months, but.
Right, but it's not us.
That, well, and from the county side of it, now, once, once we got about this time of the year, last year, and we started into the, the special district discussion, we, we stepped back. So.
Yeah.
Yep.
Timing.
Yeah.
All right, item number thirty seven. The only one that I had questions on was the Waters Edge HOA. Do we know if there's anybody from that HOA here to speak on their behalf?
I was not aware of anyone that was going to be attending.
For that item or for any?
Sorry, Adam, put you on the spot.
Yeah, no, I, with a lot of these, we'll, we'll know usually and, and I'll try to speak up. As far as this week, I'm not aware of anyone that was planning on coming.
Okay, anybody here to speak on tax actions, raise your hand or forever hold your peace.
Property taxes?
Yes.
And like a appeal or something like that for personal property taxes?
That might be tomorrow.
Let's see.
I apologize. This is my first one, so I'm kind of.
No, I totally understand. Let's see. Yeah, so this does have to do with some taxes. I'm wondering if that's on this list.
What's your, what's your business name?
So it's actually not a business. It's for a resident.
Oh, two is on there. Yeah. Yep, Lisa two is on here. Now, just so you know, the recommendation from the attorneys and the assessor's office was to approve that. So we're looking at approving that.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to make sure there was no questions on that because it's been a real circus.
Totally understand. So, so the plan for that one is to approve. Anybody, anybody else here on those issues? Well, then if there's nobody here to speak, then I'm fine just going with the recommendations.
I can make that motion.
I can second.
Okay.
All right, it's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes three zero. Okay, that brings us to the end of the regular agenda. Do we have any public comments before we go into closed session? Yeah. Before you start, I have to ask, is this about the flag?
Yes.
Okay, we're actually looking for, we, we had ordered one and we're looking for it now to put it up. Do you, do we know if that's on its way or did they find that?
Still working on it.
Okay, so we've ordered it. It wasn't here.
Ordered it, you should have already had it.
Well, we do, but it's out, outside because we've never actually, we'd never actually had one in here before. So it's not like we had one and took it down. The only one we had is outside and it's still outside. And we didn't want to take the one outside down, so we had to order another one.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that my children could see if politicians hold up to their promises or not.
So we've got, we've got one on the way. We didn't want to take the one from outside down, but it is on the way and they're looking for it now.
Well, my name's Terry Bishop. I am one of the five original signers on the initiative to restore Utah's state flag and I'm out busy collecting signatures. I want you to know my claim to fame right now is, as far as signature goes, is Governor Gary Herbert has signed our petition to restore Utah state flag. He does not like the new flag. He is, was against changing it. You know, you talk about two million dollars on a well. Well, let's talk about how much, how many million dollars we're going to spend on a flag that more than eighty percent of the population don't even want. When I go out and collect signatures and I personally have collected a couple thousand, they don't even like the new flag. They don't want the new flag and they do believe it should be up to a vote of the people. So I'm just here to let you know that even the Republican Delegate Committee has voted to support our resolution or have done a resolution to support our initiative. So I'm just surprised you guys are still flying that. But, you know, put the other one back up where, you know, but we need to get to the point where we're one state, one flag. And I'm surprised when I asked you, Amelia, and you, Brandon, to sign our petition to allow the people a choice to vote. I mean, if you like the new flag, great. You can vote in favor of the new flag. But if you don't, you can vote in favor to restore the Utah flag. Neither one of you agreed to sign the petition to give the people an opportunity to vote. Put it to the voice of the people and let them decide if they want to spend a couple million on a new flag. Thank you.
You.
Thank you. All right, anybody, anybody else for public comment? Okay, we'll go into closed session.